San Diego, and I'll be your moderator for this virtual candidate forum. I'd like to thank the University City Community Association, the Miramasa Town Council, and the Surrano Valley Town Council for co-hosting tonight's event. The community sponsors thank the League of Women Voters and the candidates for their commitment for encouraging, informed, and active participation in government. And now, I'd like to welcome our candidates, Jane L. Glasson, Tommy Howe, and Kent Lee. The League is proud to be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing candidates or political parties. The League moderates candidate forums using a format that is fair and informative. We ask the candidates to keep to the issues of the position rather than personal attacks. The views expressed are those of the candidates. Sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate by the League of Women Voters or the sponsors. A League website is now available that is your comprehensive, nonpartisan, online guide to elections covering federal, state, and local races. This website is called Voters Edge California. You'll find a link in the chat. All candidates for local offices have been invited to include their information on Voters Edge website at no cost. We're excited to announce that KPBS Radio will direct their listeners to Voters Edge starting in May. We are recording the forum, and it will be available, unedited, from beginning to end on our website, lwsandiego.org. Questions were submitted online before the forum, and you may also submit questions now by using the link provided in the chat box. Please remember to use civility and respect in wording your questions and frame them so that all candidates can answer. Assisting tonight are League question screeners Jane Andrews and Karen Lee Robinson, and from our host organizations, Diane Ahern and Matt Langston. Our timekeeper is Michelle Morgan, and our Zoom administrator is Kim Knox. This forum is for San Diego City Council, District 6. Participating tonight are the candidates Kent Lee, Tommy Howe, and Jane L. Glasson. The candidates will have two minutes for their opening statement, two minutes for their closing, and one minute to respond to each question from the audience. We will alternate who answers each question first. Prior to the start of this event, the speaking order was determined by reverse alphabetical order. So let's begin. Kent, your opening statement, please.
Thank you, Jeanie. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for moderating tonight's forum, but also to the co-hosts, the UCCA, Miramasa Town Council, and Surrano Valley Town Council. My name is Kent Lee. I'm a candidate for San Diego City Council to represent District 6. I come to the table as the son of immigrants from Vietnam and Burma who came to the United States specifically searching for greater opportunity. And as a father myself of two toddlers in a home where both my wife and I are working to support our family, I know all too well the financial hardships that we're facing, whether it's the pump, the grocery store, or even in trying to keep a roof over our heads. Navigating us out of these tough economic times requires trusted community experience and leadership. That's going to be working hard for our families, our small businesses, and for all San Diegans. My background is rooted in service to the community, and especially in District 6, where our family has called home for over fifteen years. I currently serve as the Executive Director of Pacific Arts Movement, which helps to present the San Diego Asian Film Festival, which is going on literally as we speak. I also volunteer as a board member on the Miramasa Community Planning Group, serve on the UC San Diego's Chancellors Community Advisory Board. I'm also a co-founder and co-chair of the San Diego Asian Pacific Islander Coalition. My nonprofit leadership background in fiduciary responsibility and budget oversight gives me what I believe is the fiscal experience needed to manage the large budgets that we have as a city, especially in under-resourced environments, to build broad coalitions and collaborative partnerships, and the desire to ensure that our community's voices are going to be the ones represented at City Hall. I especially believe that following two years of a pandemic and the many challenges that we faced, that we are still a city full of opportunity, and that is opportunity that we have to create and support, not just for each other, but for the future generations that are here to come. So it's with this sense of hope and determination that I believe we need to work to find solutions to the many challenges we face, and that's why I'm seeking to serve. Especially look forward to tonight's discussion, and especially to continue connecting with many of you as neighbors in the weeks and months ahead. Again, my name is Kent Lee. I'm running for San Diego City Council here in District 6. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. And now, Tommy?
Thank you very much, Jeanie. It's great to see everyone tonight. It's great to have the League of Women Voters here, and I say thank you to all the participating organizations for putting this forum together tonight. I'll mention this in my close, but really, as candidates, we don't have enough opportunities to do these kinds of forums. So I appreciate you all being here this evening. My name is Tommy Howe. I'm a San Diego County Planning Commissioner. I'm the co-founder of San Diego County Democrats for Environmental Action, first registered as a Democrat when I turned eighteen back in nineteen eighty-seven. To me, that means a great deal to me. I'm not a Democrat out of convenience. I'm a Democrat because I believe in a level playing field and decentralized power and looking out for our middle class and working-class neighbors and not the Elon Musks of the world. Many of you know me as a former radio host. I was on the air at FM ninety-four-nine for about ten years. I was on a KPRI. Most recently, I was the morning host at ninety-one X. I've always been very politically involved, and during my ten years on the air at FM ninety-four-nine, I also served as the Public Affairs Director for the Jefferson Pilot Cluster in Mission Valley. And as part of that job, I worked with a variety of nonprofits and neighborhood outlets around the city. It was a great way to get to know the needs of many of our communities here in the city. Many of you also know me from my involvement with the environment. I manage communications for our local Surf Rider chapter. More recently, I was leading the Rewild Mission Bay effort through San Diego Audubon and as a coordinator and chief consultant to that project. We're really focused on infrastructure restoration, fixing our broken streets, genuine affordable housing, improving our parks, and increasing effective transit, the same thing that we were really concerned about when I ran back in two thousand and eighteen. I'm the only candidate here tonight who's really demonstrated actual action on a number of these issues, including really raising the awareness about Gold Coast Drive and Parkdale to get those routes repaved and rebuilt, which we expect to have happen this summer, getting the epicenter funding from the county, getting seven million dollars for that, and transferring that from the city to the county, and also learning the media when a dangerous new lane alignment was applied to Gold Coast Drive just last month. Obviously, University City has a new council dynamic. I'm looking forward to speaking about that tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tommy. And Jane, your opening remarks, please.
Hello, I'm Jane L. Glasson. I'm a candidate for San Diego City Council, District 6. I appreciate being here today. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm a special education assistant at a high school. On my mother's side, I'm Filipino and Chinese and Spanish and Peruvian and European. And on my father's side, I'm European, and I've been a US citizen all my life. I first registered as a Democrat because my dad was a Democrat. And I am a Republican now, and I love being a Republican. I have respect for the Democrat Party and the Republican Party. I enjoy being a special education assistant at the high school in my community, and my priorities are to fix streets and potholes, protect beaches, maintain parks, support businesses, restore public safety to numbers needed to protect neighborhoods. And I'm a leader with experience and commitment. I graduated with distinction in the major at a university. I graduated with honors at a community college. I was Young Lady of the Year at a Boys and Girls Club twice, and my bachelor's degree is in child development. I have two associate degrees, general studies and foreign languages. I can speak Spanish and French as well. I'm a homeowner and resident in Miramasa since nineteen ninety-eight. I volunteered as treasurer of my community association. I volunteered as a chapter officer while a college student. I appreciate University City, and I do not believe in the rezoning because it makes a lot of people unhappy in University City, and I want to be responsive to them. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we're going to start with a question, and I will be rotating them. And the first group of questions is going to go Jane, Kent, and Tommy. So Jane, the first question, what are the root causes of crime in San Diego? And how do you plan to address the recent spikes in crime across the city?
I think that there's a lot of anger and sadness and helplessness, especially with the student vaccine mandate. I've seen it personally, how it hurts people. And I want them to feel that there's no, because they are our future. Our youth are our future, and I want to support them the best I can. In my community, there are a lot of homeless of all ages, and I want to do what I can for them, even if it means helping them to have a plane ticket so they can go back home to Texas or to another state. I talked to someone who's from Texas. I just want to do my best as a city council member and as a citizen now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Kent?
Thank you for the question. I do believe that really generational disinvestment within our communities often created really uneven access when it comes to economic opportunity. And really, the cumulative impact of this kind of disinvestment is ultimately one of the root causes when it comes to crime, especially as communities get denied access to well-paying jobs, equitable educational opportunities. And I think the pandemic has only served to exacerbate many of those disparities that we've already known to exist. Data has been showing that crime and violence is on the rise in the city, which means that we really need to be working collaboratively, both with our local communities and our partners there, as well as with law enforcement to deploy strategies in order to stop rising crime. It means that our law enforcement needs the tools and resources to prevent and to solve crime within our neighborhoods, and that we, as a council and as a city, have a responsibility to fund data-driven resources, strategy, solutions, specifically to improve response times, decrease criminal activity, and increase the confidence we have in our law enforcement to respond.
Thank you. Tommy?
Well, part of the reason we have lousy response times is because we simply are not paying police an affordable wage here in the city of San Diego. We are losing officers. It has become an emergency with the city right now. We do not have enough officers, and officers are leaving after we have, as taxpayers, have paid to train these officers. And after a few years, they may wind up going to the county. They may wind up going to Riverside or Orange County communities to wind up working. As far as the root question, you know, I couldn't tell you, you know, what is actually driving criminality or crime, but I can tell you that a lot of our neighbors are being affected by that. And right now, it's hard to get police out, not just with reaction times, but if you have your catalytic converters stolen, if your car is broken into, it's unlikely the police are going to show up. They're simply going to have you fill out a report. And we've got to stop making homelessness an issue for law enforcement to be dealing with. Law enforcement needs to be dealing with protecting and safeguarding the populace and taking down speeders and street racers as well.
Thank you. And Tommy, so the next question, we're going to go Tommy, Jane, and Kent. And the question is, do you support or oppose the rezoning of single-family residential properties in University City, or I guess throughout D six, to medium-density townhouses?
No, I absolutely do not. Let me be very, very clear about this, since I know a lot of our neighbors are here very concerned about this tonight. I've spoken with many of you at the door about this. No, absolutely not. I do not support that rezoning, in part because I have been proposing since two thousand and seventeen, when I began running for city council the first time, that, A, the city has a pathological problem with building housing that no one can afford. So if we truly want to build housing and lower vacancies, I have a proposal for how we can manage down payments. But one thing we need to do is build actual affordable housing. That means developer or government-subsidized affordable housing. We could do that in Miramar, on the north side of Miramar Road. There are large swaths of areas that are within our built environment where we could actually build housing and do that effectively, and we could get transit in there, and it's near job centers. Doing that in South University City, it doesn't make much sense. You only have one east-west route in and out of there, and frankly, it feels punitive. And I hope we can talk more about that. A minute is not enough time.
Thank you. All right, Jane, the same question?
I also agree with Tommy on that. I do not support the rezoning because all University City residents whom I spoke with, they were against it. One said that he really believes it would bring down his property value, and he said that his neighbor was going to sell, and so he was thinking about selling as well. And it's really sad because it's a beautiful neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, and Kent?
Yeah, so I think what's really important to keep in mind here is that the state has already indeed passed SB nine. I know that's been cited a couple of times, which currently allows for single-family parcels to build up to four units on existing lot. And one of the biggest problems with it is that it doesn't have a lot of local input and control. And so we know that this proposal is one of the ways in which the city is trying to align that local zoning with state policy. Now, I've talked about how housing is definitely one of the most critical issues we face, specifically regarding middle-income families throughout our region. But at the same time, where and how we spur that housing development is extremely important, and how we focus it around high-quality transit is important. The community's feedback is a critical component to all of this. And so if we're looking at housing opportunity, I believe the city's first priority should be to focus on the opportunities that we have in areas such as Kearney Mesa, with the recently passed community plan update, even in North University City where housing can be aligned specifically with the infrastructure and transit that we have, such as with the trolley. And ultimately, you're not going to find, for me as a candidate, that I'm going to make you promises that I can't keep, including whether the council is able to restrict the kind of development that SB nine already allows. And what you'll find for me is consistency in terms of how we implement policy and engage our community for impact.
Thank you. All right, and so for the third question, we're going to go Kent, Jane, and Tommy. And the third question is, how would you approach the community concerns about spills and sewage gas venting due to the pure water raw sewage pipeline that runs through D six?
Thank you for the question. So as I understand, I do believe that pure water currently is moving into its first phases of implementation, and a significant portion is coming up through D six, not just within University City along Genesee, but also cutting through Miramar. And I think one of the most important things that the city needs to be able to do is ensure that the lines function the way that they're supposed to, that the construction is done in a way that's going to have quality and that we don't have negative impacts within our local communities. That is obviously a concern that we have from our neighbors and our residents, and especially in an area like in University City where we see direct impact right near the residents that we have there. I think it's really important that the city is responsive, communicative, engages the community along the step, every step of the way, in terms of how it implements pure water, and that we do so in a way that's going to be safe and responsive to our neighbors.
Thank you. And Jane?
Construction needs to be done with quality, and the city needs to be responsive to everyone in District six. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Tommy?
Jeanie, would you be so kind as to repeat the question, please?
Certainly. How would you approach the community concerns about spills and sewage gas venting due to the pure water raw sewage pipeline that runs through D six?
Okay, let me be clear. If I'm elected as your council member, I am not going to be someone who hides out in the office. I am someone who is engaged with neighbors and community. That's what I've been doing for the last several years. That's why I go door-to-door. I don't want to be someone who's hiding away and not answering the phone. I will be engaged with the community. If there is a concern regarding something legitimate about the construction of a capital project, I want to be involved with that. I can tell you right now, in District six as it is, you know, in the Miramar area, we're looking at Miramar Road being steel-plated city for several weeks. If I'm your council member at that time, I will be watching that like a hawk. We have another development going into Carroll Canyon in Miramasa. I want to make sure that that gets rolled out effectively and well, and that we get Carroll Canyon Road finished. I'm going to be, as your council member, I'm also serving as a local leader and a voice for the community. If there are concerns about a project, I want to hear about that. I don't want to find out about it in the paper.
All right, thank you. All right, the fourth question, it will go Jane, Tommy, and Kent. And what is each candidate's position on converting vehicle lanes to bike lanes and bus lanes? How should the community have a voice when deciding to remove vehicle lanes? And so that's going to start with Jane.
I think it should go to a vote so that the people in University City, they all get to vote on it. I mean, when I went door-to-door, there's this one lady, she said she had to do a survey and that the deadline was that day. And so after she had invited me into her home and we talked, she got ready to give her feedback to her community. I think people in University City, they need more time. They need a chance to talk it over, and they should be able to vote on it. I do not think that there should be any change with University City. Governor Drive is wonderful the way it is. I hope they don't change it. I went there on the east side of Genesee, and it's wonderful the way it is. I don't think there's any need to change it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Tommy?
Okay, so communities have got to be heard. I have been saying throughout my two thousand and eighteen and my two thousand and twenty-two campaigns, our slogan is neighborhoods first. Downtown has a hard time hearing us when we tell them what we need, and instead, we wind up having things imposed on us, sometimes in the dead of night secretly. Case in point, what occurred on the west end of Gold Coast Drive, less than a block away from an elementary school that hadn't even been built when the city got the traffic data for where they wound up putting the repainted lines. They did that without telling anyone. Chris Kait didn't know about that. A lot of our community stakeholders weren't aware of that. The neighbors were completely unaware that was occurring. So at least we're having these public discussions about this now, and I want the community to understand that if I'm your council member, if things are a secret from me, I'll be very upset about that. Now, regarding Governor Drive, I'm reluctant to go and take away lanes from any road, but I'll tell you, what they did on Gold Coast was not acceptable. That made that road unsafe for everyone.
Thank you. And Kent?
Thank you for this question. Certainly, you know, we talked a lot about, in some of our communities within D six, that we don't have a lot of transit options currently available, and that's actually one of the lacking sort of factors from an infrastructure standpoint throughout our district. And at the end of the day, I think if we're going to be looking at implementing any kind of changes, we need to rely on smart, data-driven implementation, not just looking at traffic patterns and the studies that the engineering department will do, but also really getting a sense of the use cases on the ground from our community. That's why having community outreach and engagement is so important. It's something the city is not doing a very good job of in a number of cases, because I think if we do factor that in, if we're able to actually have those conversations with our neighbors, that we can implement changes that would make sense based on the data and based on what we're hearing on the ground. And really, ultimately, it comes back to ensuring that we're actually doing the outreach and engagement that we say is needed to make these changes.
Thank you. All right, for the fifth question, the order will be Tommy, Kent, and Jane. And the fifth question is, would any candidate like to speak about the mayor's push to create new parks when funds have historically not been available to hire enough staff to maintain existing parks and rehabilitate parks that have outlived their life and our need of tree and equipment replacement?
No, terrific question. Look, I mean, we've got a real serious revenue problem at the city. That's why open space areas, certainly in Miramasa, like Montango Canyon, are literally overgrown. And so neighbors can't even really get in there and enjoy a lot of the trails. So I would like to, you know, for my bottomless bag of money, I would love to get more revenue towards parks and open space. I would love to see some of our open space areas become city parks. Rose Canyon certainly being one of them. I'd like to see Rose Canyon and the Rose Creek Corridor on the west side of I five being looped into a large watershed-style canyon and park, similar to what's being done right now with Choyas Creek. Now, I'll tell you, I am concerned because, you know, our developer-impact fees were taken away at communities. And so it's going to be more difficult when new developments are being built. There's really no incentivization now for developers to go and put in parks that are going to match the size of the population that's going to be moving in. So we really need to double down and make sure that our city parks are being well taken care of, well-funded, and expand them when possible.
Thank you. Kent?
Yeah, I think many of the communities in D six know that we are already under the acreage that we've been seeking in terms of park space over the years. And I was heartened to see that in the mayor's most recent budget proposal, that there is an increase that we're seeing on a number of fronts, including park funding. I think this is where some of the exploration that's being done by the Parks and Libraries Foundations, for example, about future funding sources to ensure that our parks and libraries have the investment that they need within local communities is really important. But I think tied to that question that was asked really is also a question about city staffing, which is something that the city is struggling significantly on. And that kind of structural fiscal issue is something we need to deal with if we're going to have the staffing, the resources to actually support the parks that we're desiring. The last thing I would note is that when it comes to park development, especially with some of the changes that we've seen at the city, it's really important to note that there are pockets of District six that still need investment, especially in parks, especially when you look at neighborhoods that have been built out fifty, sixty, seventy years ago that have parks that still need to have upgrades, the next phase is completed, such as in Miramasa, and funding still from the city.
All right, Jane?
Yes, thank you. Well, I don't know the best answer regarding the mayor's, what the mayor wants to do, but I will say that the park where I live, it is really beaten up. The outside basketball court is dangerous, it's got a lot of cracks. The basketball players are concerned. And the grass park where people play soccer, it is so bumpy, so dangerous that youth could get injured terribly. We need to take better care of our parks, our current parks. And when we can do that, then I think the city should focus on more parks. But we've got to focus on taking care of our current parks. They're really in bad shape. Thank you.
All right, our sixth question, the rotation will be Kent, Tommy, and Jane. And it is, much of the D six community is in the very high fire hazard severity zone. How will you work to ensure that measures are in place to slow the rate of fire spread through canyons and homes in the community?
Thank you for this. Thank you for this question. So I think there are a couple of factors to consider here. One is that we have really an amazing fire rescue department here in San Diego, but one of the greatest challenges they face, just like you've already heard in a number of other facets of the city, is significant underfunding. Our firefighters have in many, many years not received raises. They are understaffed, seeking to both recruit and retain staff that we need. And so without a doubt, we need to ensure that our fire rescue department is equipped and able to respond, and that they are able to get response times down as well, especially in many of the communities that are harder to access. I think in addition to that, we also really have to be careful about how we're looking at any potential development and ensuring that if we're having development, it is infill, it's not going to be building out into other open space areas where fire risks come into play, and that we do everything we can to ensure that we don't create additional fire risk in our communities moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Tommy?
Well, we live in a year-round fire season now here in San Diego and Southern California. I think that was revealed back in the spring of two thousand and fourteen. We had a springtime Santa Ana. We had a major fire event throughout the county, and that affected areas around the city. I'll tell you, one of the folks that I interviewed on my radio show years ago is a guy named Jeff Bowman, and he was the former fire chief in the city of San Diego. And I remember back then, we were talking about the deficiencies that we have as far as the number of fire stations. And thank goodness, we've got Ladder Thirty-six online now by Miramar Cemetery. That's canyon country over there, so that's great, but you could also get Miramar resources there, too. I do agree that, you know, our fire departments are chronically underpaid. We are losing staff members, but they can't as easily move around as police can, because if you leave the fire department, then you have to go through another fire program. Maybe if you went to, like, Chulavista or some other locale in the county. I'd also put a greater emphasis on getting native plants and clearing out invasive vegetation in all of our parks and canyons that the city has access to. That's really important, too, to restore some ecological balance and prevent fires.
Thank you. Jane?
Yes, hi. To slow the rate of fire spread, I look at the park across the street and also on my side of the street. The landscaping has not been taken very good care of, and so a fire could set easily on the dead vegetation. Trees should be trimmed. Trash should be picked up. Trash can catch on fire just as well. Now, we have wonderful neighbors, but they haven't been cleaning up as much because they're concerned about catching COVID-nineteen. So I think we should have more city employees. So I, I think we should have more city employees cleaning up our vegetation, our trees, our plants. And I think we need to support our firefighters and make sure that they're taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jane, you can stay on because you'll be first. I'm just going to go Jane, Kent and Tommy for question seven. So what is your position on amending the outdated people's ordinance, which prohibits the city of San Diego from recovering costs associated with trash pickup services from residents who live in single-family houses?
I don't know how to answer that question. If, if the question was in front of me, it'd be easier because I'm more visual than I am auditory. It's hard for me to, can you like shorten that question a bit?
Let's say yes. So the people's ordinance change so that the people that live in San Diego in single-family homes do not pay for their trash pickup. People in condos and other apartments do pay for their trash pickup. So there's a movement to change that so that everyone has to pay for their trash pickup. Do you agree with that or not?
I think the important thing is that we just get the trash picked up. I think that people, they have a lot of expenses as it is. Like my property taxes, like $1,300. And all I, all I have about is like less than $15,000 to spend a year, I think, because of all my, all the taxes. People are overtaxed and they just need a break. We need to make sure that we pick up all the trash. And at my condominium, condominium complex, I pay $320 a month. And yeah, because trash pickup is part of that. I think we're just charged more than we need to be. And I know California has made a lot of revenue recently and they could give it back. And one way would be to pick up the trash and not, not, not taxes so much, charges so much. Thank you.
Okay, Kent?
Thank you. Yeah, so the people's ordinance has been in place since, I believe it's like nineteen nineteen and, and it does separate out who can be charged or, or not. And I think ultimately that comes down to an equity issue. I mean, we have a bifurcated system where we, we are treating different residents differently depending on where you live in San Diego. Ultimately, I, I think this is something that should be put to the voters for the people to decide. I do believe that Council President Elo Rivera, as well as Council Member LaCava have both been looking at it and moving it forward. But I think there's also still a lot of questions that really need to be answered here in terms of how we really ensure that we have the service levels that our residents need for our trash. I, for example, over the last fifteen years, have had to replace our trash can three different times because they get so beat up. And I think one of the considerations the city should explore is providing free trash cans, whether that would be a feasible opportunity. And then ultimately, if we're looking at implementing things like composting, you know, just really considering how we're going to get the public feedback in terms of any kind of structure relating to changes with the people's ordinance moving forward.
Thank you. Tommy?
I'm dubious of doing that. I would not be supportive of that if it came before me. This is a revenue issue. We talked a bit about this last night. We have real, very, very serious revenue issues with the city. These revenue issues were there before even COVID came upon us and we lost a lot of the T O T taxes. But I don't necessarily think this is the way to go and make up revenues. You already do pay, single-family homeowners already do pay to have their trash picked up in the, in the course of basic city taxes. And, and let's, let me add that one of the responsibilities of a city is to maintain the public health. And so a city's job is to go and pick up the trash anyway. Those are things that we as residents and homeowners are simply unable to do. You incorporate in part to have some entity going and picking up trash. And I think this might also go back to asking the wrong questions again, because I would like to see a dynamic where people are incentivized to recycle and de-incentivized from throwing trash away. Perhaps would be a way to go and base rates upon that, but I, I would not be in favor of repealing the people's ordinance at this time, no.
Thank you. All right, we're ready to go to the eighth question. And the order will go Tommy, Jane and Kent. Several communities in D six are undergoing community plan updates with proposals for higher residential and mixed-use density in areas that have been traditionally designated light, industrial or single-family residential, or have easements in place to prohibit development because of their proximity, oh, I'm sorry, because of their proximity to M C A S Miramar. Where in D six is it appropriate to add a higher-density residential or mixed use?
Miramar, Miramar. I mean, you don't have to use the entire north area of Miramar. I don't mean M C A S Miramar. I mean, some of the areas north of Miramar Road. Let's make, let's be clear, there are some great businesses over there. Some of my supporters who have businesses work over in those areas. I'm not talking about eradicating those or zoning them so they have to leave. What I'm saying is that there are large office parks, warehouse areas, massive parking lots. Let's go above a Miralani. You'll see them. A lot of those were, were heading towards a lower rate of vacancy even before COVID occurred. If you really want to go and get preferably affordable housing and densification and do it right and do it within the development footprint, so you already have the roads, you already have the water, you already have the sewage, Miramar seems to be the optimal place to do that instead of rezoning an area that was zoned for residential use and where you actually have people after six P M like South University City. I, I think this is a very, very clear decision and a great opportunity. If you're talking about undoing zoning in one place, why can't we do it in, in another where it doesn't affect people who are already living there?
Thank you. All right, Jane?
Will you please repeat the question?
That was rather a long question, but basically, where in D six would you suggest increasing the density?
Um, I do not know the answer to that. I mean, like, I don't go to a lot of places because I, I'm on foot a lot, but I look around Miramesa and there is so much housing, I don't know where they could fit more. I think we need to respect all, all, all the housing that we have, the, the condos, the, the ones that are taller and like several stories high. We need to respect the single-family homes, the homeowners. We should not, I don't think there's more that you can do with Miramesa because there is so much housing, I don't know what to do. It's, it's packed. I mean, I'll walk around Miramesa and wow, it's like everywhere there's a home, you know, or a business. Now, I will say, I don't have a car, so I haven't been able to drive around throughout the district. But where I want to University City, I'm governor, it, it looked like there should be no change. It's just fine the way it is. I
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kent?
Thank you. I think I, I talked about this a little bit earlier as well, but I think the greatest opportunity we have for housing density within D six currently really is in the Kernie Mesa area. That is a community that has passed a recent community plan update, really offering an opportunity to take what's typically been an industrial commercial space and add residential in it. There is the potential of adding transit into that corridor as well as Sandec explores the Purple Line. And that can be a center that's going to serve residents, offer workforce opportunities and the commercial space that we've already seen in that corridor. I think one important thing to note here is that we do also have to follow a lot of the guidelines that we have from a federal, but also from a city standpoint. One of the reasons why we can't build in the Miramar area is specifically because of M C A S Miramar. And the AQ's map shows you why you can't actually build residential within those spaces. Now, the city's already been proposing some on the eastern side of the Miramar area where that is possible. But I can guarantee you, if the city was able to do it in the rest of Miramar, I'm sure we all would presume that they would have actually tried to do that already.
Thank you. All right, we're going on to the ninth question. The order will be Ken, Jane and Tommy. And question nine, I, someone would like to know what the candidates would do to address the increasing homeless population in D six.
Thank you for this question. Homelessness is honestly one of the most complex issues we are addressing as a region. And we're seeing that it not only impacts the folks who are unsheltered and housed, but it also has a significant impact when it comes to quality of life issues and interactions with businesses, et cetera. I think we need a compassionate response when it comes to homelessness, but really, we also need a collaborative response that's strategic. We're seeing some of that right now, specifically driven at the county level, where we are aligning resources to try to ensure that we not just have temporary housing and, and shelter opportunities, but long-term permanent supportive housing opportunities where we can align services that would meet the specific needs of the residents who are facing homelessness. We have to recognize that those who are homeless are, are in many ways afflicted for different reasons and that the solutions that we address have to be specific in meeting the needs of those individuals. And we have to recognize when we're dealing with mental behavioral health issues, addiction issues, and ensuring that those individuals get the support that they need and not just being criminalized for being homeless at the end of the day.
Thank you. Jane?
Well, I, I know a lot of homelessness in Miramesa where I live and I do a lot for them. Sometimes I buy them food, some. I talk to them, I give them advice. I, I'm very friendly to all of them. I do wish that our state of California would do more for them. I, they need homes. At the, at the park where I live, there's a building that used to be our public library and a lot, a lot of windows were broken in and the windows were boarded up. And homelessness, they, they sleep, and people who are homeless, they sleep there at night. We've got to find some place for them so, so they can get, get a good night's sleep, feel safe. The ones I meet, they're, they're very kind to me and I'd like to give back more to them. We've got to give to, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Tommy?
If you ever want to know how good you have it, you should go out with Veterans for Peace sometimes and go meet some of our, our homeless neighbors. I've done that on several occasions and I have to stop after fifteen minutes because I'm so overwhelmed by the volume of tragedy and tragic stories you come in contact with. I have been advocating for years for permanent supportive housing. What we are doing right now in the city of San Diego is clearly not working. Police know it doesn't work to cite someone for vagrancy, knowing they don't have an address, that they're not going to show up in court. It's just cruel and punitive to treat human beings like that. We have got to get to a place and follow the footsteps of some other cities that have done this, like Salt Lake City and Houston, not exactly bleeding-heart towns, and invest in permanent supportive housing with the wraparound services as was done successfully in Claremont and Talmidge and other communities. Every council district has to step up with that. That's the way we're going to start, begin to get out in front of this homeless crisis that's affecting our, our city.
Thank you. All right, we're off to the tenth question. The order will be Jane, Tommy and Kent. And how satisfied are you with the progress the city has made on its climate action plan? How would you ensure that its goals are met? And what will you do to reduce carbon emissions? Jane?
Sorry. Well, climate action plan, I, I went on the internet and I saw that not all the data is filled in for like two thousand twenty, I think it was. There was information for, for like two thousand ten, but not enough stats were filled in. So I don't think we know enough about the climate. So the climate action plan, I think that more stats have to be done and shown on the internet so that people can go to the government website and see it. We can't restrict people too much. Like I believe that God made this earth and that God loves us and he wants us to love our neighbors. And so that we shouldn't try to restrict our, our fellow citizens. We shouldn't tell them, you can't have a vehicle unless it's an electrical, electric vehicle so many, so many years from now, like ten or twenty years from now.
Thank you, Jane.
Thanks.
Your time is up. All right, Tommy?
Thank you very much. Obviously, this is a big concern for me. I helped the, what was, became the city's climate action plan. I helped put that through the Democratic Party back in two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen. And then that was part of the document that was modified and, and passed by city council. I, I think it is a good document. I do believe that we have to move more towards electrification. I think we have some good opportunities to do that here in San Diego. This is a city where we have abundant sunshine. Unfortunately, though, we have a utility that just got a twenty-year lease on life here in the city and they are trying to undo rooftop solar. And that's a real problem. Why, why is the city not working with all of, of, of the organizations here in, in our community to ensure, to make it easier for any property owner to put rooftop solar on their home? You want to cut down on the use of greenhouse gases? Get everyone on solar. But as long as we have a utility that's going to be dragging their feet on that and, and still trying to, you know, you know, subvert rooftop solar use, that's going to be a real problem here in the city.
Thank you. Kent?
And thank you for the question. Even the latest city's climate action plan update that has been put forward now is shooting for a ambitious plan to reach net-zero greenhouse gas emissions by two thousand thirty-five. And we have shown that as a city and even I'm sure in recent report cards, that we're not really meeting all of our benchmarks and we have a lot of work still to do. I think it really does mean that as a city, we need to be able to fully fund implementation of our climate action plan if we're looking to achieve that. And we need to fund it from a multi-year horizon to ensure that we're committed to it. And it also means that we really need to think about how we're going to align the work that we're doing across our region from a housing standpoint with infrastructure and transit, because all these components do have to align in order for us to actually make a noticeable impact on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And then finally, I think a lot of voices have been part of this discussion, especially in the creation of that climate action plan. And I think if, if we're going to really succeed, we want to make sure we center those voices in terms of how we're going to continue to make advances moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, for our eleventh question, the order will be Tommy, Kent and Jane. And the question is, how should the city attract and retain first responders such as police and firefighters for the city and the region?
Pay them better. Give them better salaries and better wages and better benefits. That's not a difficult question. A lot of these questions we're talking about tonight, it's hard to answer them in sixty seconds. This is not a difficult one. Look, we are the eighth biggest city in the United States. We cannot be serving as, 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 as the Bush League supplying a, a trained police officers that we pay to train to other communities around Southern California and around the nation. And as I mentioned earlier, it's, you know, firefighters are in a really difficult place because it's not so easy for a firefighter to pick up and leave one department. If you go to, go to fight fires in Chula Vista, you have to go through their firefighting academy to do that. Please, let's get to a place where we are investing in our public safety, where we are investing in officers. We're doing so in a reform-minded manner. We're doing so in a manner that emphasizes de-escalation above all else. And let's just make sure that we are giving competitive wages and benefits to our firefighters and police. I think that's a very simple place to start.
Thank you. Kent?
Thank you. I, I think frankly, this goes far beyond just what we're hearing from a public safety standpoint. If you look across the city, you find that we have had a structural budget issue. And, and one result of that is that as a city, we are failing to recruit and retain the staff that we needed across multiple departments. And we, we've seen that from, you know, parks and rec, in development services, even up to, to public safety. I, I think firefighters are a really good example of this. Just sitting down and chatting with them recently, really hearing from them, the concern that many of them have not gotten a pay increase over the time that they've been serving. So that in many ways, if you look at their take-home pay today, you compare that to what they received when they were first hired, in some cases, twenty years ago, that when you factor inflation, they're actually making less today than what they made, you know, twenty-plus years ago. The, the city council recently passed a compensation philosophy plan that really makes a push towards having more competitive wages. And if we're gonna solve this issue across the board, we need to ensure that we solve our structural budget deficit to ensure we have the capacity to do that.
Thank you. All right, Jane?
Yes. I, I believe that our police and firefighters, that they should have better wages, competitive wages and benefits. I am against the vaccine mandate. I don't want our police or firefighters who are heroes to ever feel like they have to get vaccinated for COVID-19 so that they can keep their job. I am also protective of our youth who may want to become our heroes as well as police and firefighters. They have, the students have a vaccine mandate in the school district where I live. And they may want to be police officers or firefighters. And if they have to get vaccinated, they may not want to be in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to our twelfth question. And the Thank you. All right, we're going to our twelfth question and the order will be Kent, Tommy. So since SB nine is state law, can each candidate please tell us if they support or oppose rezoning single family lots to multifamily or mixed use lots as a way of creating more housing? What are your thoughts on implementing this law in District Six? Kent?
Thank you for the question. I know this has come up in a lot of discussions and I think this is this is a challenge that we're facing on a local level. SB nine has been passed at the state level. I think I mentioned it just a little bit earlier. But what it really does allow already just by right for a single family residence is the ability to split their their lot. And with ADU policy that's already in place also at the state level, it basically allows for folks to build up to four units on a single lot. I think as the city is looking at how this is going to have an impact, I think it's really important in thinking about how we can still have local control about the implementation of SB nine. I think that's where the community input is extremely important. I know one of the factors that we've talked about addressing is ensuring that this is not going to just benefit investors and speculators, but really looking at how we ensure that it does actually provide housing, if that's how it's going to be implemented at a local level. I think ultimately, this is why things like our community plan update and the feedback that people are providing in that process is so important so that it actually has an impact on how the city looks to implement it.
Thank you. Tommy?
I don't have a terrible problem with ADUs, but I do not support SB nine. SB nine basically was was passed by the state. It was largely based upon a lot of what the the community of Berkeley had done. And Berkeley had their own particular housing needs. It is a college town. They are hemmed in by San Francisco Bay and the hills. And I thought it was odd that it was really applied to the entire state. I mean, the curious thing is that the city went and undid what were otherwise some pretty good ADU regulations in two thousand twenty. And I think SB nine can potentially aggravate what was done with, you know, building up to the towards the edge of someone's property, building up towards the sidewalk. So I think that's problematic. But and and I don't, what's being proposed in South University City, let's not get that confused. That's not necessarily related to SB nine, but in both cases, it allows predatory speculators to come into the community, leave you those cards, I want to buy your house. They're looking to go and subdivide your lot. That's a real concern. That's a threat to homeowners, certainly here in California.
Thank you. Jane?
I really liked Tommy's answer a lot. I I I don't want investors, the speculators to change what we have, to take away from what we have. I I think that, well, I just really liked Tommy's answer. So I agree with what he said.
All right, thank you. All right, then we're ready to go to the next question, thirteen. The order will be Jane, Ken and Tommy. City council members are the lawmakers in San Diego. They are the legislative branch. How, as a city council member, will you work with the mayor to actually get things done by the various departments of the city that don't report to you, such as improving sanitation, parks, crime, homelessness, et cetera?
If you elected, I would do my best to work with all the council members in the best way possible. Great communication and not do my best to work well with the mayor. Positive is key. Teamwork is key. Teamwork makes the dream work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ken?
Yeah, so I would add just a little quickly that even though we are the legislative body from a city, from a city council perspective, that voters did pass some time ago now, a strong mayor form of government. And that's where the collaboration and the ability to actually negotiate to get votes, to win needed resources and services back, especially for our own communities, is really important. And I would stress that that's why we need to be able to collaborate and work with not just the mayor, but our fellow council members that are serving. To that note, I will share that that I am currently endorsed by Mayor Tak Gloria. I'm also supported by six of our nine current council members. And I have a history of showing the ability to build collaborative solutions to find pressing, you know, find solutions to pressing issues that we might be facing. And I think that is something that I will be applying on the ground, especially considering that I have shown that I'm able to earn the trust and work with and negotiate with the folks that I'll be serving on council with as well.
Thank you. Tommy?
So in around two thousand five, I believe, when Dick Murphy was mayor, unfortunately, the city voted in favor of something called Strong Mayor. I opposed it back then. I don't think it was a good idea. It essentially removed the mayor from essentially being the ninth member of council. And as a result, a lot of access that council members would ordinarily have with departments was taken away. And so now essentially, if you want to get things done beyond simply a passing legislation, very often you have to go through the mayor's office to do that. And there's a there's this idea that if you're not getting along with the mayor this week, then, you know, your priority may not necessarily wind up being coming first. But I can tell you that any council member is going to have priorities. They're going to have an agenda. They're going to have things they want to get done. I want to get the roads rebuilt here in District Six. And so as a result, I'm going to have to work with the mayor and he's going to have his agenda. And it does come down to negotiating. The current mayor, I've known for some time, I think very highly of him. I look forward to working with him and I'm confident there's going to be a positive working relationship. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. All right, for our fourteenth question, we're getting through a lot of questions tonight, will be Tommy, Jane and Kent. And it is about the budget. As posted on the city website, the mayor has proposed a fiscal year two thousand twenty three budget increase of eight point two percent. This budget affects departments providing essential city services, including police, fire, refuse collection, homelessness services, library services, park recreation. How would you prioritize the needs of the differing needs in our community?
Well, I would certainly say that, as I've indicated in the previous question, we have a real problem right now where we're losing police officers more quickly than new officers can be brought onto the force. That's a public safety concern. And as I mentioned earlier, talking about trash pickup, that's another facet that a city, a service a city delivers that we as residents can't and probably shouldn't necessarily be doing ourselves. That's why we have a police department. So I would say as long as, you know, those increases are going towards personnel and personnel, I would say exclusively, then I'd say that's a positive thing. Many of you know I'm an environmentalist. I'm very, very concerned about parks and open space. I'd like to see some additional resources going there. But I also want to make sure that we're not spending money wastefully. And as we saw with Gold Coast Drive and the the lane of realignment there with with the bike lanes, that was a really foolish and unfortunate way to lose a lot of money. If the city had just reached out to the community, we could have saved them a lot of time, a lot of money, and frankly, some embarrassment.
Thank you. Jane?
Yes, how would I prioritize the needs for our community? We got to take care of the police. If they, if we don't take care of them, they can't take care of us. Got to do trash pickup and I'd like to see street sweeping as well. We need to take care of our streets. Gold Coast Drive is very beat up. I mean, I'll take bus nine sixty four or nine twenty one A and it's like a Disneyland ride. It's so bumpy. Even Miramesa Boulevard is very, very damaged as well. We need to take good care of our streets so that the people's vehicles don't get damaged and people don't fall off their bikes. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, and Kent? Kent?
Can you repeat the question one more time just to make sure I cover all of it?
Okay, yeah, it's about the budget and the budget affects departments providing essential city services. How would you prioritize the needs in our community?
Yeah, so I, our city has had a challenging budget, especially during the pandemic. In fact, we've only been able to to really get through the last two years with funding from a federal level. And we're seeing the last bit of the ERP funding we've received being used for that. I think what's really important here is that the city really needs to ensure that we deliver on the core city services that we provide our residents. That's at the basic, you know, bit of what we are responsible for as a city. That means ensuring that we have streets paved and maintained, but also repaired. Was really heartened to see that the mayor increased in his budget proposal our street resurfacing budget by more than fifty percent, another twenty seven billion dollars this year. Also believe that we need to ensure that parks, libraries and other basic services that we provide are funded. That also means that ensuring that we have the staffing that we are so critically lacking at the moment to actually deliver on those services so that we don't end up with delays like in trash collection or, you know, closures of everything from fire stations and other needs that we have and we're short on the personnel that we need.
Thank you. All right, for our fifteenth question, the order will be Kent, Jane and Tommy. And it's a little bit shorter. Can you cite specific examples for how you've helped, how you've helped out or prioritize the concerns of small businesses in the area?
Yes, so thank you, Vinnie, for this question. District Six is really a home to a lot of small businesses throughout our region. In fact, these are the small businesses that are in many ways the backbone, not just in terms of how people meet and celebrate and enjoy different establishments, but also how, you know, many individuals within our communities are employed. And these same small businesses have had disparate impacts as a result of COVID nineteen. And so there's a lot of work I think we need to do to support them. Part of the work that I've done, especially as the treasurer of the Asian Business Association, especially also as running another nonprofit, is ensuring that many of our small businesses not only have access, but understand how to access the resources that we're providing. This during the pandemic included things like ensuring that businesses were applying and receiving funding for the paycheck protection program, but also accessing the relief funds that the city of San Diego were providing as well. And you can be sure that I will always be an advocate to ensure that our small business community has the resources they need to be successful.
Thank you. Jane?
Well, I have been going to a lot of businesses and I've been telling them that I am running for city council and that I want to be there for them and I support businesses. I've been saying that to some small business owners as well. I and I've been letting them know that I don't believe in a vaccine passport and I don't believe in the vaccine mandate. And I am disappointed that businesses had to close down during this global pandemic. I think that we lost very quality businesses like, you know, Miramesa and Kerry Mesa lost their bowling alley. And thankfully, there was someone who who bought the bowling alley in Miramesa so we can have it again. We cannot let this happen again where businesses have to close, where they don't have enough money. Thank you.
Thank you. And see, Tommy?
Jane's right about the bowling alley. We're really fortunate that someone stepped up and bought that and actually kept that vital small business and local establishment in. I think that's marvels. My wife and I, we certainly patronize a lot of the restaurants. You know, I, you know, obviously, we went through a terrible situation with with COVID and the whole country went through a situation that we haven't been through in a hundred years. So, you know, everyone was really affected in ways that weren't really expected, but obviously, small businesses absolutely did take that on the chin. I have joined some San Diego police officers to stop by small businesses along Miramesa Boulevard to make sure they felt safe. But I talk to small business owners every single day when I go door to door and when I talk with neighbors. And what I know is that a lot of the small businesses, they they certainly feel taxed to the bejesus. But I tell you, my sympathies are really with a lot of the folks who have to travel long distances just to get to a job at a restaurant and looking out for their interests and making sure that they're able to stay in the community because they're affected by healthcare and wage concerns as well.
Thank you. Right, our sixteenth question, the order will be Jane, Tommy, then Kent. And the question is, the city is proposing the developer impact fees from new development be spread across the city instead of being restricted to the community in which the development occurred. This will delay or defund planned improvements to provide public facilities and mitigate development impacts in developing communities. What do you think about the proposal to distribute these funds to areas of greater need? And Jane?
I think that we have to look that all all places in District Six have needs and we got to be respectful to them all. We can't just think, we can't just say we're going to help them more or them more. We've got to show equality, care about everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Tommy?
I was really opposed to our community, especially Miramesa, losing its developer impact fees. You know, because we had developer impact fees, we were able to negotiate a good deal with the Three Roots project and the community is getting a new rec center out of that. But we have another project going online called Stone Creek in a few years. And now we're facing a situation where they're going to build a development that's going to be twice the size of Three Roots. And now the what the developer is not going to have any incentivization to go and build a park that's going to, unless they want to. But we're not going to have the leverage to ensure that they do, that the it's going to have enough capacity for the volume of people who are going to wind up living there. There were some equity intentions with moving developer impact fees and centralizing them. I think those were very, very good. Clearly, it was part of the Parks Master Plan. Clearly, there are a lot of neighborhoods that are absolutely deficient on parks. But I don't think necessarily creating this kind of slush fund in City Hall was really the solution for doing that. And it's going to affect District Six communities especially.
Thank you. Kent?
Thank you for this question. Definitely, I think there's an equity issue that it certainly has been brought up across our region in terms of communities that are lacking in investment. And a lot of times, people focus on talking about the geographical impacts and about how many communities, especially south of the eight, don't have that investment. And I think it's important to point out that in many pockets within our communities, we still see disinvestment. We see streets that still need to be repaired sometimes for for over twenty years that haven't had services implemented. We see parks that need to be updated. And I think what's really important is that we have a council member who's going to be there that that fights to ensure that these resources are still delivered within our local communities, that we are serving our residents and our neighborhoods and ensuring that that all of our communities within District Six have the same access to a lot of these funds. I know within the Miramesa Community Planning Group, some of the discussion that we've even looked at is ways in which that we could work with developers like the Stone Creek Project that's coming ahead to see how we could find ways to still retain those funds within the the local area. And that's something I'll look to champion as well if possible if I'm elected.
Thank you. All right, the seventeenth question is the order will be Tommy, Kent and Jane. The question is, in two thousand seventeen, city council, under the direction of the city attorney, removed the special use permits and the advisory status of the volunteer recreational councils. City council is now looking at reforms for the volunteer community planning groups and their advisory status. What's your position on volunteer city advisory groups specifically and of and of volunteer civic organizations in general?
I support them. I support them. I support local rec councils. I support our town councils and I especially support our local community groups. As your council member, I'm going to work to, that's where I'm going to go for my information. You know, part of being a city council member is not only looking after your own community, but having the wisdom to make good decisions citywide. When I need to make a decision on something that's affecting an area of town that I may not necessarily live in, I may need to go to that community group to hear from the local residents there to learn more about the issue. So I can tell you, I thought it was a mistake to take the money away from the local recreation councils. That was a mistake. It's not like they've got a ton of money in the first place. I think there was some concern, some concerns in the city attorney's office that if the money was somehow mishandled or misappropriated or went missing, somehow the city would be on the hook for that. And there could be a liability issue regarding that. But frankly, the city rec councils had worked fine prior to that. And I think that was a big move. And again, it was another attempt to really centralize this power in City Hall. I'm opposed to that.
Thank you. Kent?
I've had the pleasure of serving on the Miramesa Community Planning Group now for over nine years and for one, and maybe biased because of it. I see the exact importance that our community planning groups or rec councils have within our city. I mean, it's where at the very base level, we're able to get input, where we're able to have impact in terms of projects and proposals coming down the line. It's also where I've seen firsthand over the years, we've made a significant impact on how our our community sort of develops. A great example being that with our three roots development here in Miramesa, the the rec center that's being built there, especially with a lot of push from community impact. I know there has been discussion about how we make community and planning groups and other advisory bodies like this more representative of the communities we serve. And I certainly think that's something that we should be looking to achieve, but I don't think But I I don't think we do that by taking away the actual bodies that exist to give this kind of input. And again, it's it's something that I want to ensure that we support having this kind of body moving forward to advisory city.
Thank you. And Jane?
I would do, I did, I would do my best to be supportive. I would go to meetings. I would listen to the city council members and the mayor and just do what I can for the city of San Diego. Love San, I love San Diego. I'll give my best if elected. Thank you.
All right, I think we are close to the time. This should be our last question before the closing remarks. And the order is Kent, Tommy and Jane. And I think it's a good question to end up with. Why are you running for city council? What are you passionate about? And what do you want to achieve? Kent?
Thank you for this question. As someone who was not involved in politics at all and has been focused my entire life on serving from a nonprofit capacity, both as a career, but also as a volunteer. You know, I'm at the table because I really believe that our communities really need to be represented when it comes to City Hall and that these are the voices that are going to help drive the solutions that we need to ensure that our future generations have a city that that we all can continue to live, work and play in. For me, it's really personal. I mean, raising, you know, a two and a four-year-old that within this community and making it my home really makes me believe that the impacts that we make need to go far beyond what happens in the next four or eight years. And that we need electeds who are going to look at how we actually make meaningful impacts that last far beyond the time that any of us are in office. And in fact, if we do a great job, those the impacts that we have are not going to be the things that we're thanked for while we're here serving. That's why I'm running.
Thank you. Tommy?
It's a great question. I was going to cover some of this in my close, but I'll cover it some of the time allotted here. I am tired of seeing our communities being treated like flyover districts by downtown. Downtown and City Hall have a really hard time seeing past the economic centers of Sorento Valley, of Sorento Mesa and MCAAS Miramar. We have one hundred and sixty thousand neighbors here in District Six. And I would say that the historic neighborhoods of District Six, you know, Miramesa, Kearney Mesa, Sorento Valley, we have not had good representation since before even the previous boundaries of District Six. Really since Brian Mainshine has represented us, we've had Carl DeMile, Lori Zapf and Chris Keth, and essentially downtown special interests utilizing these individuals to further their interests downtown and not our community's interests. And that's why it takes a long time for our roads to get rebuilt around here, and why it takes a long time to get the streetlights replaced. I'm running because I'm looking out for our middle class and working class neighbors that have been ignored here in District Six for many, many years, even longer before the current boundaries of it.
Thank you. Jane?
Well, I don't always think about what I'm passionate about because I always give a hundred percent. When I was growing up and a member at the Boys and Girls Club in Solana Beach, I always gave my best. I loved giving my best. It's just been a part of my nature, my nature throughout my life. I I love San Diego. I've lived here all my life and I love giving back to San Diego and people from all over the world. It's when I work at Miramesa High School, I'm, I look at what I can do for everyone, whether they are a citizen, whether they are here legally, I mean, whether they came here legally. I respect that we are a sanctuary state. I treat all students great, whether they you know, it doesn't matter what their status, I I care so much about them. I I care about my high school classmates. I've I I care about so many people. I really do.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
All right, now, before our candidates give their closing remarks, I want to thank you all for attending and asking such good questions. Please be sure that you're registered to vote by June, before June seventh. Also, please attend more League events where we give in-depth inform information on all sides of critical issues affecting our communities. For example, tomorrow, Wednesday, we will be having a lunch with the League on Zoom on a method of election reform called ranked choice voting. You can go to our website to register ahead of time. And on behalf of the Sorento Valley Town Council, the Miramesa Town Council and the University City Community Association and the League of Women Voters of San Diego, I want to thank the candidates for running for office and attending our forum this evening. And thank you all again. You are here tonight because you're following the League motto, don't be just a voter, be an informed voter. And now the candidates' closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes. We will begin with Jane. You're muted, Jane.
I really appreciate all of you who have put together these Zooms yesterday and today. I appreciate everyone listening to this Zoom. I appreciate Tommy Howe. I appreciate Kent Lee. I appreciate Eugenie Brown very much. When I met you in two thousand fourteen, I was very impressed when I was running for city council. Just thank you for everything. I really appreciate it. I have an Instagram. It's Jane L. Glasson. No, no, well, more than one. Jane underscore Glasson on Instagram. I'm also on Twitter and on Facebook. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Tommy?
Well, thank you very much, Jeannie. And yes, thank you to the University City Community Association, the Miramesa Town Council and also the Sorento Valley Town Council and the League of Women Voters. I think I mentioned this in my opening. I know I mentioned it last night, that as candidates, we simply do not have enough opportunities to answer questions in real time. And I'm looking forward to a couple of in-person events that are happening next week that I hope you'll join us for. The Miramesa Town Council will be hosting a forum in person at the high school on May second. And the Union Tribune will be hosting a forum with the D six candidates on Tuesday, the third, at the Kearney Mesa Library. So I hope you'll make it out to that. There's more information at my website, tommyhowe.com. Just let me say real quickly that I am the grassroots candidate here in District Six. I'm the voice of the neighborhood. I'm the one who's actually shown results, whether it was getting City Hall to change its tune after two weeks about putting a dangerous realignment on Gold Coast Drive, advocating for the reconstruction of Gold Coast Drive and Parkdale, which we believe will be occurring at some point later this spring or summer, and getting the epicenter rebooted with help from San Diego County Supervisor Tara Lawson-Reemer. I've knocked at over seven thousand doors. I'm looking out for our neighborhoods and our middle class, our working class and our blue collar neighbors. That's who I'm seeking to represent, not downtown special interests, not downtown developers, not lobbyists or the downtown black tie donor class. For way too long, they've been using our council seat to achieve their aims. We hear a lot of talk from elected officials, they are actions, not words. I have demonstrated that action. And let me be clear, I am opposed to the rezoning of South University City. And there's a number of reasons why this this is punitive and doesn't make much sense. And we have other opportunities to change zoning and actually move forward with effective, functional and like goodness affordable housing. I've been endorsed by the Sierra Club, the League of Conservation Voters, Hammond Climate Solutions, San Diego County Democrats for Environmental Action, former San Diego Council Members Marty Emerald and Ed Harris and Supervisor Tara Lawson-Reemer. I hope you'll visit my website and support our campaign at tommyhowe.com. Thank you for the conversation tonight.
Thank you. And Kent?
First off, thank you to Jane and to Tommy for being part of the discussion, again, to all of our hosts and co-hosts, but also most importantly, I think for everyone who's attending here, asking questions and just really helping to share in this robust conversation. I think you've heard from me tonight. I am running for city council with the belief that we are still a city full of opportunity. I want to ensure that the same opportunity that my parents' Fox delivered for me is what we deliver for our own children. And and along those lines, even I think one of the items I I realized we didn't get a chance to cover tonight is is even talking about issues like childcare and how they impact many of our families during the pandemic. Our city continues to face a number of challenges on many fronts, especially when it comes to attainable middle income housing, how we strategically think about our infrastructure and transit development, but also addressing the structural budget issues that have been plaguing our city for some time. And I think addressing these challenges requires a collaboration, especially with our community's voices. And ultimately, I believe that as candidates and as electeds, we're here to find and implement solutions. That means working with our neighbors, working with our peers and working with the mayor as well. I've been proud, especially to have been endorsed and supported by hundreds of our neighbors, community leaders, even small businesses. And to me, this is critical because these are the very communities we're seeking to represent. I've also shown an ability to collaborate and to ensure that we're going to fight and deliver for our district, being able to work and and I'm supported by, again, Mayor Todd Gloria, six of our nine current council members, as well as our county board chair Nathan Fletcher and Vice Chair Laura Vargas. I'm also a broad coalition of support, including the San Diego Imperial County Labor's Council, as well as the San Diego Regional Chamber. I've really been looking forward to this opportunity for today's discussion, but I also know this isn't it. I will be happy to leave some information in the chat and encourage anyone who wants to learn more about our campaign, why I'm running and how we can best serve you to go ahead and reach out. Again, my name is Kent Lee, running for San Diego City Council in District Six. Would certainly love to earn your vote. And thank you.
Thank you all. And good night, everyone.